That was their original?
I've been on the road.
Okay. Just over tonight. So this, this is their revised and then that. That's the existing bit right there.
Until they actually do the exact thing. The whole thing could change.
Oh, yeah.
It could, but I think there are. You know, the, the way the process we have to follow sort of mitigates that, but you're correct. Until you do a more. You know, you don't know for sure until it's done.
Hey Kevin, I'm not always right. I'm seldom wrong. Hey, I actually wrote down today, Kevin was wrong, man. I showed it to you.
Which one we talking about?
This me.
This one.
Won't be the first time. Won't be the last.
So did you get any responses on how many people are gonna show up?
Uh, looking at it, ain't nobody gonna show up. My, my question today was, um. You know, out there on Hoover Road, they, the police have a camera. And it has a, uh, little, we call it solar thing on it, so camera charges. The other day, there was a hit and run somewhere. And they had identified the truck and they caught the truck in a picture.
Okay.
Now, I thought the hit and runs down here somewhere, forty-six and one thirty-five is what I got.
There was two.
But, huh?
We had two different ones.
But the picture was taken at Hoover Road, okay, is where they identified the truck. Uh, these bridges that have these, um, low weight moments.
Yeah.
Is there a law or anything says that they can't have camera on them to see who's crossing?
Um. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah.
I mean, you got the, you, Eric called you about the email, we, what we found on the Orchard Grove Bridge.
Yeah, they're brought up to speak on that.
Huh?
I let him know what was all about. The doors are open, right?
Yeah.
We didn't lock them out?
No, they're open. Somebody came in.
Probably the bathroom.
I heard the door.
I'm gonna have to bring my computer in so I look smart.
Computer don't make you smart.
Huh?
Computer don't make you smart.
But like makes you look smart. You got it up or you got it flipped up. They don't want to. Well, the folks were in the hospital or something. They wanted to be able to connect, so hooked them up there. I said, is there anybody there? Send an email.
I don't see anybody else on there, but I, I don't know what settings he's got on.
Tick tock, tick tock.
I hear footsteps or doors. Is the door in? I came through the door, didn't lock it.
Yeah, no, it's not. It won't lock until eight.
Okay.
Just to make sure, but if you got in there, we should be able to.
Who else is on the line, Kevin?
Me.
Been back down the story, the story, baby.
I went down there, had their brunch breakfast a week ago. Too much food, but it wasn't too bad.
Too much food?
Well, that's, you know, twenty-five bucks for Sunday brunch.
Oh, my gosh. That's pretty cheap, these around this place.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not just bacon and eggs, so.
I can eat red lobster for that.
Yep.
Can't have the ultimate feast, but.
Yeah.
Shout out on some shrimp.
Yeah, bacon, sausage, cheesy hash browns, grits.
Do you have eggs?
Uh, cheesy eggs if you want them.
Well, they're telling me that that stuff's toxic if you mix that, especially late in life. The, the eggs and bacon and sausage and all that is bad.
Yay, we have people. Are you playing the drums or something?
Well, I'll find out, because I ain't eating that too much.
I didn't know it was fancy hat day.
Well, I got the same issue.
Why don't you tell me it's fancy hat day?
Because of this, not because of it.
I can't hear you, sir.
How come you didn't tell me it was fancy hat day?
Well, you know, I get more compliments on this hat than any hat I've ever had in my life. Total strangers welcome in. I like that. I can't take credit for it, though, the one I've got for me.
Well, are you guys, uh, gonna move to the table or?
Yeah, call me to order. I wait till six o'clock.
I wasn't asleep.
Oh, we pledge allegiance and we start the.
Is Mike the terminal?
I got six o'clock. I call the county commissioner, working session to order, so we pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me give you a rundown and have a, we're expecting a few more people. Kind of agenda that's on the, on the table. Explains the, uh, kind of the background information, what the goal is. Uh, also provide additional detail of what was covered in the executive session. We had Vin Doc gave you some of the key points on that one. Our point, our, our goal tonight really is just to introduce people to the, to the map, what the changes were, um, the, the initial one. And then what the current one is now and what the impact is gonna be. So, um, narrower road, they cut it from twenty-two feet to eighteen feet. Uh, cut back the amount of land that's gonna be needed for the road, tried to keep it as close as they could to the existing one. Put in a lot more culverts and, uh, and, uh, narrowed the slope so they can, you know, would have to take less land. So what we're gonna do is really move to the table and then Kevin, the two, Kevin from, from Aegis, uh, Kevin's also a longtime resident. And he's the contractor, works on our bridge, uh, plans here. So he gives us a little more detail, like I said, on the mechanics, of some of that. And then, um, Kevin Patrick will work, explains his liaisons with the highway department. So when it comes to pay roads, go roads, the kind of issues we have on maintenance. Uh, Kevin can provide some background on that one. So if you wanna address any questions, this is what you have. I know Jason on yours, they definitely said, hey, they're not gonna fix your tree. They're gonna work around the tree and then, uh, yeah, then the other one, I think we had on health departments looking to identify a separate system that somebody had. So let's just move down to the table and come up to the table and just walk through and answer any questions you might have or you think your neighbors might have.
Start at this end.
You start at the end rather than the beginning?
Well, this is their stationing. This is where they start the parking lot down here.
Oh, okay, gotcha. It is backwards, isn't it? I just don't notice. Bring that out. So, the design changed in the following way. They originally designed this to be a thirty mile per hour road. It's now been taken down to a twenty-five mile per hour, mile per hour road. No decisions or any of the designs as far as consideration with regards to asphalt or pavement. The road width is eighteen feet.
I can't hear anything on the.
Can't hear anything?
I can't hear anything.
Grab the mic from the podium, see if you can talk into it.
Well, these two mics right there, she pick it up.
Yeah, let, let me, let me call Eric.
Okay, hold on. And those are on, so I don't know why it's not going through.
Yeah, I don't either.
One, two, three.
Yeah, it's, it's picking up. So it's just now getting through to the screen.
They, they can't hear anything on YouTube.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, my mic called. She said the audio's coming through fine.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
I just got confirmation. It's, it's working.
Perfect.
Thank you, Eric. Okay.
All right, reset. Let's start again.
All right.
So, this is the new concept that was laid out based on some factors related to the conversations that happened with regards to your tree with, um, concerns with regards to the lake. Concerns with regards to the curve, concerns with regards to the construction area and that. So the road was originally concept for thirty mile per hour, now it's twenty-five mile per hour. Again, there's nothing in this is gonna dictate whether it is gravel or asphalt. That will come at a later time. The width went from twenty-two feet to eighteen feet. That's the minimum road standard that they're allowed to have. So that's gonna mean that you're gonna have two lanes at nine feet apiece. There're gonna be two foot shoulders. For each one of that, right? So you're gonna have eighteen feet plus four, so twenty-two feet wide, because you're gonna have shoulders to deal with. The slopes, the original line here, which unfortunately, someone online is not gonna be able to see, the original pink line that you have here was the original pro- road construction area. Meaning that was where they were going to be, where they were planning to go out in their construction to say, do we need earth to be moved here? Do we need to move this to deal with drainage? So the new proposal is the orange line that we see here. Okay, so you'll see, just because they went through and actually changed the slopes on the road itself, so that they're more dramatic than they were in the first proposal. So that pulled in your construction areas quite a bit. So from here was the original to here is what the proposed area would be. So for your particular area, when Jason and I were going through this and looking at this, I think your tree, your tree is in this general area here, along your property line, near this corner. That's been pulled back well outside of that.
What station?
That's station thirty. It's either twenty-nine and a half or thirty. So while Kevin's pulling that up.
Okay, so what you see here. Going this, going this way. Here is the cross section at, at thirty. The blue line.
Yeah.
Was the design that went out like this. So here is their revision. So you can see they pulled your side back. Almost fifty feet. Here's your tree. Here's where the toe of the new slope connects with existing ground.
Correct.
So you are. Twenty. Twenty to twenty-five feet away from your tree is where they stopped their sides.
In this area in here.
Yeah, just so if you're looking at this, wanna know where you're at. Three thousand feet from where they started, they call it thirty plus zeros, zero thirty hun, thirty-one hundreds. So that's this guy right here, looking this way. Okay? And we can, we can go, they, we've got, um, every fifty feet I believe. So, again, coming back to here. Again, you see, this is where you were at, clear out here.
Not in here?
Oh, here, excuse me. And now they're coming back and they won't be any closer to you than the existing road at this location. And this is where the retaining wall starts in this area.
Yeah, so that was the next thing too, is since there is such a dramatic shift in elevation and slope here, there's gonna be approximately seven hundred feet of retaining wall on the south side of this road. So it runs from this location here. To this location here, and that is the proposal. And that is so that they can actually, and unfortunately, John's not here to look at this, it is so that they can actually pull this line well be, well back to where that's at. So that's going way back up on the, on this ridge line.
So you can see here, again, at. Twenty-six fifty, which is just about, just past where their driveway is. Now, before they were catching the, I'm sorry, before they were catching here at, in the road, now they're catching it before it gets to the existing shoulder. But they pulled this entire part back to here with the retaining wall. So they're not, they're not gonna be cutting this, what is that?
Earth. Yeah.
They won't be, they won't be excavating this out, so that you won't, you won't have a bare dirt hillside all the way along here. It'll stop here at this retaining wall.
Okay. So, CMT again is gonna be checking, so one of the concerns, when we actually had the meeting with them with regards to the right of way itself, they showed this construction area coming in here, which is Mr. Homestead's dam. Basically, I've been mentioning that in this design, that we want to not have any right of way or anything of that nature impinging on this dam. So they're looking at actually going to end up even pulling this back further, so it's not even there. So it's gonna end up getting a much straighter curve and a much straighter line in that area.
I believe they've already done that.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-six fifty, that's what we will look, need to look at.
That movie's out of the way.
Sure.
So twenty-six fifty, there we go. So, again, you're always going up, walking up station. They were, they had it lower so that they were, they were actually, their slope was actually intersecting existing road, but while they adjusted this, their side slope is still not going past the existing shoulder. So they, they will.
So I'm gonna pull in as well.
Yeah.
So this line is actually gonna be even pulled in closer to where the original road was. Okay, so.
Is that clear?
Bob?
Buckley. Yeah, sorry, I'm late.
That's okay, so.
I didn't bring my driving glasses. I had cataract surgery earlier this year and I've only been here one time, so.
Ring glasses, sir.
What's that?
I got some ring glasses.
I'm good.
So just to go back and recover this, is the original, the original proposed construction area was the, the pink lines here.
The pig, pink lines?
That was their first proposal, the pink ones.
The construction limits, that's a question that I had.
Construction limit.
Right.
The.
Now, let me interrupt you. What exactly does construction limits mean? Because I see a lot of trees along my property that are within the construction limits. Does that mean you're gonna clear cut?
That, that, construction limits is the disturbed soil.
Okay, my question is.
And you're correct.
Is that a clear cut? Because if I look through here, there are trees, if I look at construction limits, I, I understand there's a previous construction limits, but I looked through here. This, this is a forest on both sides of the road. This is my property, this is my property. So if you're going to clear cut all this area in here just for a gravel roam, that's unacceptable.
I, I'm not with CMT. I'm just here to show you the cross section.
Okay, but am, am I right that clear cut means you take every tree down to make room for the project? Whether it be for the road itself or for the slopes or whatever? And one of the questions, uh, Tim, I was gonna ask you today is I, I wasn't here for the, the walk around that I think was scheduled. Couple of months ago, maybe it never happened, but what I would love to see, because this, this is our property here. Right here, by the way, we own Nature Conservancy, hundred forty-six acres over here. I don't know if anything's gonna happen there. I heard someone at one point saying, well, maybe we'd kinda make this road less dangerous by kinda smoothing curve and all that. But basically, we've got a gravel road now, and if you're telling me that you're going to clear cut, take down every tree across our property, this is our property. Here and here, that is unacceptable. To have a gravel road, you're gonna cut down all these trees along here and you keep on going for a gravel road. That's unacceptable.
Okay, all I can say is, I'm just here to help facilitate the review of this.
Yeah, Bob, I got your question. I'll go back in and ask for.
But here, here is my question. I've been wondering about this for some time because I, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect or anything like that, but we've owned this property since two thousand and one. What I would love to see is for someone to basically say, Bob, if we're gonna run the project, if it's gonna be an asphalt road, gonna be gravel road, I want someone to put surveyor tape. Up to see how many trees you're gonna take down across my property, not only my property, but Jason, all the way to the end. I mean, you look at these lines are pretty far apart, and if you're gonna take down, you're taking down a forest all along. Is, is this twenty feet? Is it fifty feet? Is it a hundred feet? How many trees of my property are you gonna take down just because of this project? And what I would love to see is for someone to put survey tape, um, that is the upper limit and say from, from the current road up until this construction limit, we're gonna take down these trees. I wanna physically see the trees that are gonna be cut down off my property. And I understand eminent domain may be a part of the process and so on, and I, here I saw information about, you know, a retaining wall and all that. But if you're saying, Bob, we're gonna go ahead and go to the, the construction limits, that's, that's a lot of trees on my property that you're gonna cut down for basically a road that I'm, I question whether it's even necessary. So I, I would like to make that recommendation to the commissioners to not just like kinda walk in the park on a Friday afternoon, but to have someone who's, who's doing, doing a lot of work, right? With, I don't even know what all these lines mean, and I don't need to, but I wanna see, uh, survey tape to say, Bob, as you walk along the road and you, you start to walk into your property. I mean, here's my house right here. This is my lake right here. Look how far from the current road is getting encroaching closer to my home, to an outbuilding, to my pond. How much property you're taking over? I wanna see survey tape that basically goes from the road, the center of the road, how much you're taking out to put in an asphalt road.
You're, I understand you're asking for the construction limits to be staked. That's fine.
Yes, stake, stake, stake and taped, so I can walk, walk the area and say, okay, this is, it's relatively thin. But again, you look right here, the, the current road is right here, but you're talking about a construction limit. Is that thirty feet? Is it fifty feet?
Sir, we, we've got the cross section right here to answer those questions.
Okay, I'm not sure I would understand them, but, but what I wanna do, okay, if those are copies, I'll be happy to bring them with me, but what I wanna do is put my eyeballs on my property and see. If you go with the DOT proposal for a, uh, asphalt, I wanna see how much of my property you're proposing to take over for an asphalt road. As opposed to a gravel road, just a upgrade.
Same design. The design, this is a design for either gravel or an asphalt road.
Okay.
Two foot shoulders on each side, which is still like.
So it's still a twenty-two foot, twenty-two feet wide.
Wider than one thirty-five over here.
That's still unacceptable.
Wider than a highway.
Wider than any road.
What I was just saying, John.
I was listening.
No, oh, you were, okay. I, I wanna physically see, I wanna have them tape off with survey tape, what is the boundary into my property and to your property? I mean, I see these messages about construction limits, you know, you've just got a thin gravel road that work, seems to work okay for, for me, but. You know, if previous construction limits, construction limits, how many, and John, this is what I was saying in the email, how many trees are you gonna take down for this entire project? For a road that's three quarters a mile long? That's my question. I don't know how, if, if you make a formal proposal or someone notes that. But I can't tell. I, I mean, at one, as I said, at one point, they said, we're all gonna meet on a Friday and we're gonna go ahead and walk the road, so it sounds like that never happened.
Do you see the retaining?
No.
Yeah. The gap, the, the gates, right, the stone gates.
I've not been on your side, but I don't know where you're at.
I mean, the proposed.
Okay, James, okay.
So it's just, again, so.
Let's, let's look at the.
Kinda jumped around here because we've had engagement in that, so I'm gonna go back and I want to explain the lines that sit here.
Yeah.
The pink lines are the, were the, was the first, first construction limit, okay?
Previous.
The previous construction limit. The orange lines are the new construction limit. The blue lines are the old road. The red lines with yellow, meaning the yellow identifies slow areas, curve, okay? So that yellow line in the center of those two, so you have orange being the new construction limit, pink being the original construction limit, the red lines with the center line representing the two lanes, the nine feet lanes. And then the original blue lines.
So, but what you're, what you're doing is you've, you've got the existing road, you're basically moving the road.
Not even using.
Onto my property. You're not even using the existing road. You're moving the road onto my property. Here's the previous construction limits and the new limits go further into my property.
Yes, because we had to shift the road to make sure that the road was going to remain a, open to those property owners and available to you. So you can't, there was no way for them to construct the road or the proposal that they've made for them to construct the road, because this basically is barely wider than a one lane road as it stands right now.
It worked perfectly fine now, I think.
For decades.
For decades.
So, so essentially they have to put two roads in.
Yeah.
To put one road in.
Yeah, so, so, so this is, you've got the previous construction limits was here, but now you're shifting the road.
Sir.
Onto my property, right?
You gotta, I, I can, I understand the confusion here, so let, since you're here, what we brought is the, what we call cross sections, okay? So this is how you determine where your grades are, where your ditches are, the existing ground versus the proposed. So what these done are, I think of these are slices.
Yeah.
Through here. So you start down there and you walk this way, so the blue line here at station forty-three. Okay, right through here. This blue line was their original. Based, based on the initial, um, design criteria, okay?
Which follows the existing road pretty closely, right?
Here.
Am I right about that? I'm looking at the blue line and it is following the contour of the current road pretty closely.
But, but there are ways that we actually reduce the impact by moving the road and adjusting vertical align, vertical grade. So if you let me walk through these, you'll see that there's been a dramatic lessening of the overall impact, okay? So if you just follow along here, station forty-three. So if you just follow along here, Station 43 used to be out here 100 feet, okay, from where they put the road at. This is the existing road bed. This blue line would have been their grades and shoulders and ditches. This black line now is what they've redesigned it to. And we can go through here every, every 15 feet and you can see how dramatically different it gets.
I wanted to take a look. At one point, they were talking about making this road more safe and less severe.
There's not been any proposals on that.
Okay, okay.
I can't speak to any of that. I'm just here as a citizen, just like you with engineering background, to explain what's being, trying to be shown on these plans. I have nothing to do with CMT or the designer that's being shown. I'm just here to explain, this is how things get done. I've been in this, I've been doing this kind of work for my life for like 40 years.
Yeah.
And I'm just here to help explain.
What I want, again, being just a simple businessman, you've got an existing road here, gravel road. And to basically create a upgraded road for three quarters of a mile, you're taking my property, I'm gonna follow the new construction limits, you're taking my property and you're cutting down a shitload of trees. You're robbing the forest, my forest. You're getting closer to my home, you're getting closer to my lake, getting closer to my outbuilding, cutting down all these trees. And in some cases, the new construction limits go beyond what were the previous construction limits.
Correct, because the road had to be shifted in order to accommodate the road being open during construction.
What they did was take everyone's comments previously. And if we walk through these, you will see overall.
I've made comments one time, one meeting.
I understand.
One meeting.
I'm referring to all the comments that were made by everyone that attended the last meeting I was at. The overall width of the impact has been reduced. That's all I'm saying. If it was 250.
Not across my property, not across my property.
Please keep it calm, sir.
I'm just saying, they've looked at this and they have.
Who is they?
CMT. And I am not an employee of CMT, they are not here, I am not representing them. I am just simply saying.
And is that Nick Bada?
Yeah, it is.
Because I have sent him messages that he has not even responded to, okay?
That's two of us, yeah.
A couple messages. He hadn't even responded to them.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask you, is the final road still the existing one or will it be the?
It's gonna be the red line.
The red line, all right.
Okay, so.
You know how we're gonna be contact commissioners? We just exonerate this. Cause that's how you reduce the impact. Cause I understand that my tree's being protected, but exactly what Bob's saying, they're cutting down all these other trees and they mean something too. You're destroying Brown County to put in three quarters of a mile of red carpet for I don't know what. It makes no sense.
I'd like to make a comment along that line. You know, at the open house we were at, I asked Jack Seifert with DNR, you know, what the origins of this was. And I challenged him, you were there, Tim. And his comment was, we just ask Endot for an improved road. And we go from, from that statement, if that's true, to, to everything that we have, all this time we've spent on this, this road has been in place for decades. Since all the publicity around this whole thing, all the signage that's been put into Mountain T, all the publicity. My wife and I have gone back to the parking lot every weekend, during the week, even the beginning of bow season. There's never more than one or two vehicles back there. And the original proposal was to spend $2,000 a foot to improve a road that DNR asked for. I mean, so, I mean, we, this is great, but I'm still perplexed at why any commissioner would be for this. You know, part of going to a state forest is the quaintness of the approach. It doesn't need to land planes on it in terms of width. This is, this is ad nauseam craziness. I just don't understand it. And if Endot can't build a road like this, has anyone asked for the county to have the funds to do this? Just to improve the road?
Can the county put in grants?
I asked at the last meeting to get those numbers.
Is that unreasonable? I mean, just as a taxpayer payer, I object to this kind of use of funds. You use money for safety, needs and wants. And this is a want of DNR. So I am, I am still confused about the origins of this. We're arguing the dynamics of what has been offered as options and proposals. And I appreciate the county commissioners pulling that out. But man, this is, this is still unacceptable.
I mean, from an environmental standpoint, how many trees, I'm having a timber harvest on my property within the next several months. But I'm just trying to imagine on my property alone, how many trees you're taking down? How many are hardwoods, right? Mostly oak, hickory that we're trying to preserve, right, for wildlife and birds habitat? And how many trees just on my property are you taking down? 100? I don't know. That's why, that's why I would love to have, I'm repeating myself, have it taped off. I can get, I've got a forester that does a lot of property or a lot of work on my property. I would love him to go ahead and say, David Pyle, how many trees are they taking down? And what's the board fee for that? Just for, why not just upgrade a gravel road that exists? Simple, for three quarters of a mile. Why are we spending like eight, what's the latest estimate, $8 million?
Well, total project, six and a half million for the paving, million and a half for the design.
Okay, for a road that's three quarters of a mile long and you got one or two people visit every weekend? Does that make sense? Is that a good use of taxpayers' funds?
Can I ask, from a county commissioner's perspective, I mean, what is the benefit of this for you? As you see it for the county, what is the benefit?
Well, I mean.
Just to get it paid for?
It's a state asset, you got Mountain T, state forest. And the goal is to have a reasonable road for people. That's that road, I mean, that road is one lane. I mean, I've been on that road, it's one lane. You just pray somebody else not come the other way. Otherwise, you'd be backing up one way or the other.
It's not like that the whole way though.
True, it depends on the area that you hit them on. And so that's, you know, it's state taxpayers pay for that as well. So they, I think are entitled some access and easier access to that state forest. So it's just not the residents or the county, it's also you've got state taxpayers. The other thing is, is the county, to Endot and DNR, they made a commitment two years ago to start this project. Don't know, you know the history on that one. So I mean, the county made that commitment to Endot. They've spent a significant amount of money up to this point to develop that plan and to talk with us and to modify the plan and see if they can come up with something that we can all live with. So it's just not more than just the county, it's also of state interest.
So, so the road has not been maintained for decades. It has not. And that's gonna change?
It's gonna be a county road.
Yeah.
So basically, the agreement would put, that's in place, that was proposed was, we would have to accept this road and it would fall under county maintenance.
And then you attract more people into Mountain T, which there's not a lot of demand. We're not doing this because of demand to Mountain T. We're talking about accessibility and it's accessible now. So now you bring more people to Mountain T, which is more burden on the county, right?
Yeah. What do you mean?
Emergency services.
More tourists or visitors?
Emergency services, support, you have to, you have more pressure.
I don't see that as a, as a limit of, they just.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still taxpayer burden on the county to support that added activity back there. Somebody gets hurt. Somebody gets hurt, they have, you have to respond. There's issues, you have to maintain the roads. I, you know, if, if, if people were raising heck to get back there and angry because they couldn't get back there. And there's eight parking spots back there now and the only time they're full is during deer season. And that's gun season, not even bow season. This isn't about demand.
We've had half a dozen of these meetings and I haven't seen anybody sitting back here screaming, hey, get this done. We want a paved road.
How many people would want to show up here and say, yeah, I can't wait, I want a paved road?
Sir, can I get the proper pronunciation for your name?
Miller or Mueller, I answered it wrong. It's fine, yeah, it's fine, it's part of the confusion.
Let me explain something to y'all. This is my take on this, okay? I've not been for this, but I have to stay objective, okay? What, what I want you all to realize is that may not be the final design. That is a proposal. And when they go out there and start doing core samples and stuff, it could change. It can go back and forth and stuff. You know, it may go 50 foot the other way.
You let the weasel in the chicken coop when you approve this.
Absolutely.
You know, I think we've asked for them to give the commissioners final approval on eminent domain, if they responded on that part.
Yeah, they have.
They have, they've said that they will give the commissioner final approval. Did they also put in there that it had to be unanimous by the commissioners?
No.
Or just a majority?
No, they did not.
You know, my question is, if you were in our place, you know, John and Carmen with a lot of the property here on the south side, my wife and I on this side, if that was your property and you're talking about cutting down trees, basically eminent domain and so on, would you be supportive of this? For what is currently a gravel drive, which is to me perfectly acceptable, that would you allow a project for the state just to basically infringe on your property because they wanna have rather than a gravel road, an asphalt road and rather than 10 miles an hour, you can have 25 miles an hour?
The reason I'm sitting up here
Yeah.
is because a little over 20 years ago, the county wanted a 35 foot rideaway across the west side from the road, west side of the road, on my property.
Okay.
And I said, no.
Okay.
It's the reason why I'm sitting up here.
And what was the final decision?
Well, they told me there was nothing I could do. If I wanted to build, I had to give a 35 foot rideaway. What did I do? I went and bought my own property. And they didn't get the 35 foot rideaway.
Okay.
So I get where you're coming from, I didn't wanna give up 35 foot.
Well, I don't even know how many, from side to side, how much, that's why I wanna visit, I'm repeating myself. I wanted to physically see tape across the property. If you've got all these elaborate maps, why can't you get the people that did the surveying to simply get a bunch of spools of tape and say, this is now the boundary of the new construction limit? So I can physically see how many trees are gonna be cut down on my property?
Even if they do that, it could change.
Okay, but what I wanna do, what I wanna do is see what is the existing plan in terms of construction limits? I think that's a perfect, seems like a reasonable request.
I don't wanna see tape. I don't even wanna see tape, I just don't wanna see it. It needs to stay the way it is. Do what?
You don't wanna see anything?
No, I think it needs to stay the way it is.
So let's go back to that then. Does the county not have enough public access to parks? And this is 1,200 acres back here. It's pretty much forgotten. Despite, despite DNR's, you know, grotesque placement of signs to get people back to it.
You know.
It's a good question.
In the future, DNR's plans could change.
And that's also the scare, right? Is what is the, what is the real intent for this? Let's be honest, we started out with a 30 mile an hour road that was $8.4 million, which, come on, I mean, this, like, really? I mean, but Kevin, you were for it though.
Have you done construction?
Sure, yeah, I paid, and I understand they're gonna have to raise that road and put some expensive culverts in, I get that. They haven't had it for 30 years. They've logged back there before and been able to get the stuff out. So what does construction knowledge have to do with the point of this whole thing? Or the pointlessness?
To understand, to understand the dynamics of this and seeing this. So if you're looking at, like I said, going back and saying, pulling in this, you've said, hey, can we do something about pulling in the construction lines? Those slopes had to change, they went down a different path. So you asked the question, does the county have the ability to upgrade this road and update it? No, not if we're going to go to their standards. Even at that, so do we have our own standards for that? No, we don't.
But you, you put in and improve roads, the county does, you can work through contractors. Why does, I'm.
It's going to be a burden on us if we don't have money to fund.
Then just let it be.
So let's, so let's say it's a half, let's say it's $4 million to upgrade this road, to widen it, to put in the proper drainage that needs to be there along with the culverts that need to be there to handle it. Cause right now, like, the one time I went through it and looked at it after a storm, you had washouts, you had gravel basically seeping into the, seeping into the hillsides, which is cost to the county because I knew right now, but if we were to update it or take it over, it'd cost the county to put that gravel back on those roads, right? So it's a struggle. Again, the point being is there's access to 1,200 acres back here that's state ground. Is it sufficient, is safe travel? I don't know. If you take and drive 10 mile an hour. There's log tops that ran across, it did happen before.
But you know, you've got more boundaries here than exist on Hoover Road. Is that true? In terms of the width of the road, in terms of the shoulder of the road, in terms of the slopes and culverts and so on?
And that's because Endot is doing the design. And Endot is already basically, when they took it down to this 18 foot design with two foot shoulders, they're saying that in going through this, they will have to go and have countless exceptions to that because they are designing to their specs.
But you're going beyond what exists on Hoover Road or in some cases even 135, right?
Let me, let me put a blanket statement out. I hear this a lot when we do projects. Why does it have to be this good? Think of the building codes. If you were to build a new public building versus our historic courthouse. The historic courthouse was not built with.
John, step back out at the camera.
Was not built to modern accessibility standards. It wasn't built to modern electric codes. It was not built to ADA standards. It was not built to our thermal requirements we have today. So having said that, when people ask, why does Endot, why did Endot go to this level of design? They have standards that are minimum standards. But when you do a project like this, and I don't want to sound like I'm being defensive here, but you have to start someplace if the project don't happen. I totally get, trust me, if I lived on here, I'm probably being, standing there with you, okay? But strictly from an engineering perspective, you start with a draft. And that's what this original layout was. You have, imagine trying to talk to someone about putting a road there without having a starting point to talk from, okay? And then to Kevin's point, we get, they got feedback from the landowners and they made adjustments as they see here because you'd appreciate this. The reduction in the, the blue line was the original. And so they went from nearly 200, 180 foot wide to now 60 feet wide of impact here at this station.
Yeah, by pushing it onto my property. By pushing it from here into my property.
Again, it's a point to make these adjustments to further the conversation. Now, I'm not speaking for Endot, I'm not speaking for DNR, I'm not speaking for CMT. I'm speaking as Kevin. If the public and the commissioners can't come to a consensus on what is acceptable, then it's up to these three men to decide what to tell Endot and DNR. to decide what to tell NDOT and DNR.
I think the public have, have voted, right?
I understand.
I have, have not heard a property owner said, "I totally support this project." Not one.
Now, let me switch hats and put on my devil's advocate hat. Please don't hit me, okay? If I owned 1,200 acres back there, if I owned 10 acres back there and I had a right of access through all of these different properties and I had the funds to make my driveway accessible to me and my family and friends, I would kind of be coming adversarial against you because I want to be able to get to my property. And when you start thinking about the 1,200 acres, however, however DNR acquired it through a gift or whatever, they're wanting to be able to have people come and visit them on, and this is their driveway. Now, that's, that's the dynamic. Those are the two opposing views as I see it. And sir, I completely understand.
The difference being public property versus private property, right?
The difference being that person purchased the property knowing the approach. So, it's kind of a...
I'm, I'm not trying to get down in the rabbit hole here.
Yeah, I get it, but it's not, it's not real.
So that, that's all I'm getting at is, as, as we started any project in my career, we went through as revision after revision after revision. You know, I've, I've done redevelopment of commercial and industrial parks and I fill up trashcans with revisions, okay? Until we get to an acceptable design. And that may not happen in this project. Again, I'm here to answer questions that are of a technical nature. Why does this have to be like this? Why does it have to be like that? My, my, it's not to, to impose my opinion on anything.
Let me ask you a technical question then. There's a, there's a line there that says previous line. It, is that previous line off the table?
You say previous line, you're talking...
The, the original road, the consumption of, you know, the, the pink line. Is that, is that land take off the table? Their, their proposal is the new orange line.
So that was, the pink is the previous construction limits line and...
So you can, you can see, this is what they were doing before. They listened to your comments and they've reduced the impact. Okay?
That's a good depiction.
I'm not sure that that's true across, I mean, you've got some previous, the, the new construction limits go beyond what was the previous construction limits.
The impacts on some property owners have changed because of the way they had to take into consideration other comments. The other comment that was made here was, "The road needs to remain open during construction."
I mean, but that, that should have been, that's a no-brainer, right? I mean, that's...
Yeah.
I mean, you got a...
But again, in changing also the slopes that required on that, they had to shift. Say, "Okay, well now I can shift further this way," okay?
So, for instance, if we go down here to 13, what's that, 13? Right there in the middle of the curve, 13.
Yep.
Now, one of these guys be able to correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe coming out of that meeting also stated, said if we go with gravel, that gravel will be a higher cost to the county to maintain. That if it was blacktop, it would probably be less of a cost to the county. And there's something else that come up and it was, I believe it was the engineer, something about cleanout boxes, okay? So the water's running down through here and I don't know exactly how large or anything these boxes would be, but it would be on the county to go out and clean out those cleanout boxes. And if it's gravel, there's going to be a lot more to clean out of the boxes. And the maintenance and the cost to the county would be a whole lot higher to keep it gravel if you went with that. So they're saying that the paving would actually be, you know, depends on how much it costs to repave it. But maintaining it as gravel would be a whole lot more expense to the county. Is that correct?
You know, it, it seems to me that one of the, the motivation for this project, because funds are available, right? $8 million, we're not paying for it. We're not paying for it. So we're going to go ahead and do it. Now, if you had to raise $8 million to have this done, do you think this project would be done by, do you think the county would chip in? Do you think the property owners would chip in $8 million? Absolutely not. So it, what's driving the project is a federal or state grant that says, "Here's $8 million. Hurry up and do the project because the funds may run out," right? Would we be, otherwise even have this conversation? No.
I think Indiana gets about half of its funding from the federal government.
Okay, but I think there's a... But the clock is ticking, right?
The lucky did it come from?
State.
It's all state?
It came and set aside through Eric Holt. Specifically for reutilization by DNR.
But the clock is running, right? If, if you don't spend the $8 million, then we're going to be up against the wall. And guess what? The project can die and I would be happy about that.
So the cheapest option is to do nothing because the county hasn't done anything on that road.
Right.
And if they have to, you're going to have to do something. So that's common sense right there. It'll cost the county eventually.
You know, it seems...
It's been there for decades.
It seems to me we're talking in circles. I mean, we couldn't be any more clear. The, the property owners saying, this, this is...
Unacceptable.
Just, just unacceptable. It's not, yeah.
Let me ask one other question. The, the, I mean, how, how many people have called the city, the county saying, "I want this road improved"?
I've had two.
I've had a few and they're not going to say anything publicly or calling social media saying anything.
I'm not asking for names, but, but it's pretty bleak.
That's a very small number.
It's pretty bleak.
And, and I don't see nothing stopping DNR from going back that road and taking equipment back there and making their parking lot larger.
See, and that's, that's my, my issue is, you know, the Tuttles and other, other owners have graded that road. I've done it a little bit. I'm going to do it a hell of a lot more. I mean, if DNR wanted a better road, they could put gravel in there.
They would take care of it.
When they had an event back there, they would put gravel down, you know? When they had that youth, that urban youth project back there, they, they gravelled everything from the entrance all the way to the, to the Duke utility. So if their complaint is they want a little better road, then put a little better road in. Why does the county have to get involved in this and why do the citizens have to be assaulted?
You know, if the DNR was so, it was so important for people to find that Mount T. I'm the one that got the sign put in down at the end of the driveway. Because those people were coming up our driveway looking for it constantly. I had to make several emails and finally somebody got a sign to point it in the right direction. They don't even care if people can find it. And I've got that paper, paper trail from years ago where I did that.
Yeah, let DNR work with, with the state to, to get, you know, the funding to, to gravel that thing and run a, you know, run a cheese grater on each side. And that's, we're not talking, we're talking about common sense and we're talking about a simple solution to all of this energy, wasted energy. I don't want the thing to go through at all. I, I'd love to see the road improved for, for the residents and people going back, I guess, to, to the forest. But how do you, as, as the commissioners, hold this project accountable? If, once you approve it? I mean, to, to stay within reasonable restrictive lines and to play nice with the community?
I've asked and they agreed to provide a critical path, phases of the project, critical path with the each phase and when, when those decisions are made, if there's any significant changes that impact the scope of the thing, then we have a decision for you. So we'll have, we'll have control over the project.
And that's normal from your experience?
As someone that's from bridges to roads to sewer plants, once you get into the public works project, which anything that the municipality or government entity issues for civil, civil work, to make change, significant, or even some minor changes to how it's, how an approved set of plans, there's paper trail. You have to note a design change, as you said. And if, you know, welcome to Brown County where the glaciers dumped their waste 10,000 years ago. We could, they, I say we, sorry. They could go out and do soil borings every 300 feet and miss boulders, we call floaters, the size of this building, okay?
They won't get down two feet before they hit porous sandstone.
Okay, what I'm saying is, there are the best-laid plans. Until you get out there and move dirt, you're going to uncover something unknown, okay? To your point, every project I've ever been involved in that include that, that was public, whether it's federal, state or local money, there's a strict guideline, legal guideline that has to be followed if changes are to be made, okay? So to your question is, what happens if they go out there and find something they have to change? It'll be well documented, pay will be adjusted. If it's an increase, decrease, all that stuff's taken care of and records are maintained.
John, I, you know, I, I'm not really tapped into the whole political process, but I do watch the news every night. I'm just imagining, better call Raphael. Is he Channel 12, Channel 13? I'm imagining that Jason and I and John, maybe a couple others, Chris Tuttle and so on, get ahold of Channel 12 or Channel 11 News, Fox News, whoever, and say, "We want you to come down and interview the neighbors here and we want to tell you, we, we lay out these maps. We want to basically shine a light on this project." You know, they're talking about people being starved and, you know, the SNAP program and so on because the government isn't providing meals. And yet, the state is willing to spend, or DOT, $8 million on this and none of the neighbors are supportive. In fact, they're angry that our property is going to be taken for a project that we don't think makes sense. And so have them interview a bunch of us, maybe interview the commissioners and apply political heat on the project. How would that, how would the average citizen in Indiana feel about spending $8 million when we can't feed people, but we want to create a super road three-quarters of a mile long? I'm just wondering how that would play out on the news.
It's been recently done, so, yeah.
So where, where do we go from here? Now, it sounds like we're talking in circles. I don't, I think we're pretty clear in terms of what, how we feel about it.
I'll go back to NDOT. I mean, this is on tape. It's been agreed. So I'll go back to NDOT, ask for your questions on the construction limit. They needed to do another survey anyway before we got to that and they started hitting the ground. I want to make sure that, you know, you guys, everybody was aware. So I'll go back and ask to...
So, so before we go down that path, we go through the exercise of mapping that and show you that boundary. Is that going to have any influence on changing your mind?
Not mine.
Probably not, but I'd be more informed than I am now, than I am now. I can't tell, I mean, if, if this is the existing road, but, well, one of the things, and, and Tim, I did see that you put a footnote that say, "Someone needs to map out where the clea, uh, finger system is." Yeah, septic system. I, I can tell you it's kind of right in this area here. But, you know, I don't know if that's within the construction limits or not, but it's probably right in here.
The last time they were here, I took them to the health department and they got the records of any septic system that they had a record of for the entire road. So they do have that information.
Okay.
So then they'd have to cut down more trees to put in a different septic.
I for one...
So I, I would say, since I own this property and potentially all these trees are going to be cut down, clear cut, every single tree here is going to be clear cut. And that gets even closer to our home, to our outbuilding, to our lake. Yeah, that's something. And you've got a lot of technology, you've got all these maps. Obviously people are doing the surveying. And so how long would it take for them to put red tape or camo tape or white tape, whatever, yellow tape, just on the, it would be only the construct, the latest construction limit line? That's something I think is reasonable for me to, to see. And Jason, they're whacking some, and Melinda, they're whacking some trees in your property as well, right?
Yeah, I'm sure they were.
Okay, yeah.
They're going to go up the other way.
Well, one caveat I will put to that, and again, I am, I do not have the CMT design file. So take this as a general statement. When we're doing surveys for public works project, anything bigger than six inches at breast height, six to eight inches, we locate when we're doing our topographic surveys, okay? So, yes. Now, this could be an exception because you're just saying heavy woods, mature trees, okay? And when an appraiser would come out, let's do a what-if scenario. Right-of-way would be staked. You would then, and I know that's not what you want to hear, but at that time, your, where, what trees are going to be taken would be answered, okay? I know you want to see it before then, but this is the standard...
My forester could do that. Just show me the tape and I can have my forester walk that and he can estimate the trees that are taken, the number of trees, the species of the trees, the board feet, the value.
Okay, well, I'm trying to answer your, the, the procedure question that is followed when you have public works projects. And there would be a right-of-way appraisal done that would take into account what you're asking for, okay? You're asking for that effort to be done prior to a design being final.
What I'm saying is there's a lot of survey work that has already been done and all I'm asking is that tape be simply applied to where you currently have the construction limits. That's all I'm asking for. All, a lot of the surveying work has been done. I would think it'd be a fairly simple process to go ahead and put tape along that boundary. And then I can see with my own eyeballs, are you taking about, I mean, how many trees are you talking about? Some, some of the parts are, this is a tree probably from the existing road right here. Maybe no big deal. But some of the other areas right in here, this is, this is the drive that goes into my property. And you're looking at basically whacking out a substantial part of the property that currently borders on Pumpkin Ridge Road. So yeah, I'd want to see the number of trees that would be taken out as a part of the project.
How much pressure is NDOT putting on the commissioners?
At this point in time, we've just basically had meetings with them to say, "This is what the citizens have come back and asked questions or recommendations." And we went back and pushed and they supplied this. Now, I will say that at this point in time, they did mention that they were pretty much at their limits as far as the design criteria that they're willing to follow. Not going any less than 25 mile per hour road. They actually went and took and they know, like, these curves here, they're all going to be listed, the exceptions to the design criteria. Some of the areas that are going back to with regards to retaining law and those things are all exceptions.
So this, this is as small as it will get? This is as small as it will get?
That's, that's, that's as big as it's going to be if they proceed with this construction. Again, unless something comes up to where there's a boring taking, as Mr. Sanders mentioned. If there's a boring taking, then they have to shift. There's EPA studies that have to be done after that that could potentially influence water flow and at the impact on all those things. There's artifacts that have to be done. So we're not even, we're not even anywhere in the phase of those kinds of activities.
Does anybody know the current easement? Is there, is there a legal easement for the existing road as of right now?
Welcome to Brown County.
Isn't it 13.5 feet from the center?
It is, whatever the road is.
No, okay.
I mean, if you look through 300 years of paperwork and maybe find some kind of a easement that you might consider legal. I mean, could you just not stay within that and take three feet here and maybe a foot here? It's good here, so leave that alone and then...
I recovered, I recovered a set of what they call road cards that appear to be from the late 60s, maybe 50s, early 60s. And it goes back to when the federal highway started issuing funds to maintain roads and bridges. So there was a map created for all the counties in Indiana. They called it FAS 2 Route Map, Federal Aid Secondary Route Map. And all those roads are identified, numbered, and... And recently, like about a year and a half ago, I discovered in the surveyor's office a set of index cards that had every road width of the surface, what it was, and what the right-of-way was. Okay? So, the problem is, there's no record of, back in the late fifties, early sixties, whenever this started, there is a record book, commissioner's record book, missing, that has the minutes of those meetings. So there's no record of those right-of-way widths being adopted by ordinance. So-
So if nobody knows the actual legal easement, then giving it to Endot would be a way to make it official easement.
Okay, so-
You can give it to Endot.
What, yeah, it would go to, it would go to-
If you sign off on the project, they would-
It would go to the county.
Take the land, and then it would be officially a-
It would be the county land.
Officially be an easement for a road.
Correct. Officially, there is-
So it's exactly the same thing that happened with Yellowwood.
As of right now, nobody can produce that, right?
We, we can, the problem is, and I'm speaking way out of turn here, so I'm gonna shut up. We're opening a legal can of worms here that's way outside the purview of this project.
Those are my favorite.
I think, I think, you know, so, I spent time up in Wisconsin, Michigan, they have, you know, narrow roads with charm, tree-sided that goes into state forests, beautiful.
Different state laws.
I get it, I get it, but, you know, it's, I guess maybe they have more common sense than us. But, you know, you go through there, it's beautiful, and they're narrow roads, and they have turnouts. Turnout's pretty easy. You know, I-
Yeah.
Don't mind the turnout. These people that are going back there to forage, to hunt mushrooms and to hunt, they, that's just part of it, you know? It's, that's a sensible, very low-cost option. And I don't know why, I mean, if, if, if the county takes that up, this, this thing over, there are ways to improve this road without this mess.
I'm gonna just, just, my gut tells me that the biggest problem on this road is drainage.
Well, again, this is, I'm, I'm gonna say something without any control over how this gets received. There is a, there, you will, you will hit a floor that the state will not fund this anymore, if you don't do a minimum amount of improvement. Okay? Now, you get, when you get to that point, then you go to the county, and how much money do you guys have to improve three quarters of a mile of road? You don't have two buffalo nickels you don't have right now.
We're spending all of our money on bridges.
Yeah.
And now you're gonna have to maintain it, right? I mean, it's-
And if it's gravel, it's gonna cost even more maintenance.
I, to, to Ron's point, I was asked the similar question back when Lake, not Lake River, when Yellowwood Lake Road was in this stage. And I think it was the fellow that had the hobnob, he was all up in arms about it, and he wanted to protect the lake, protect the lake, protect the lake. And one of the commissioners asked me to take a look at the plans, and I'm looking at them and seeing, okay, they're moving the road out of the wash area and all this, and so I'm, I'm thinking, okay, ask the highway department how much gravel, what are they, what's it costing them to go out there every spring and fix up the road after head of rain or after winter? And the response was, ten, twelve, fifteen truckloads of gravel every year. Okay. Where is that gravel going? It's washing into the head end of Yellowwood Lake. It's like, okay, so if you want to protect the lake, improve the road so it doesn't wash out.
Yeah.
And, and you, and you, we're starting to get to that point here. I, I hear what everyone's saying, and again, I'm not trying to impose my opinion in here at all. I, I, I see all three, four options.
Yeah. I appreciate your comment, but, you know, what happens now when it washes out? The residents go out there and grade it, you're pretty much down to pour a sandstone in that low saddleback anyhow. So when it does wash, it, it washes out, and a grater goes across it, not by the county, not by Endot, and you haven't had, it hasn't been a burden on you, you know? Uh, now, if an edge of the road washes out, you have to maintain it, especially if it's asphalt. You know, I mean, to, to think that you're, that an asphalt road's gonna go down, and it's not gonna need maintenance, we, we know better than that. And then who replaces the asphalt road once-
The county would have to.
All right.
So you can't fix this road how it is, but you could fix asphalt issues later? Think about that.
Yes.
It's, it just needs to be-
I don't think any of yous are interested in it, are yous?
Nope.
No.
No.
Well, you're the ones that took the time to come out.
Yeah, and, and, look, we appreciate, I appreciate, you know, the efforts you guys went to here, bringing them back to do this, very much so, I'm gonna be super clear about that. Appreciate the transparency, appreciate you coming out, you didn't have to do this. It ain't easy. I think you've been there before.
Yep.
But, uh- Just so you all know, actually we had Endot in here. Uh, I actually suggested Mr. Allen come in, because of his tech, technical expertise. And I actually suggested Kevin Patrick, Commissioner, because he's, he pretty well understands it, okay? Uh, to try and explain to yous also, uh, I wanted, I wanted to give the, the county a fair shot, and I wanted to give you all a fair shot to see what was going on. That's, uh, yeah.
So what is the timeframe for decision, and what more information is needed?
I actually heard that they'd like to see it in the next four or five months something happen. Because that funding will not stay there. If it's not funded or appropriated, at some point, it won't happen that year or what. I don't even know if it'd go away or what.
Right.
The word is encumbered.
It's already-
It's already appropriated, it has to be encumbered.
Okay, so they would have to re-encover it to-
Re-encover it will pass whatever the timeline is. I don't have any idea what their timeline is, on that decision. That's kinda why we're looking at the Gantt chart, because if you look at the Gantt chart, that tells you specifically the date that they're trying to have a contract in place, because that's what, that's the next step. The next step is to basically get a contract in place with the local public agency, the county commissioners, to do and proceed forward.
Do, do the commissioners, has there anything with any of you guys that's been internally discussed in any way, shape, or form with what any intent, expanded intent is with Mountain T.? Kevin, have you had any discussions about expanding any kind of activity in Mountain T.?
The only thing I heard was, they wanted primitive camping.
He said that's off the table now.
They don't wanna do primitive camping?
He said it's off the table.
That's what I saw, and maybe it was a message from Tim.
They don't wanna do-
That's what Jack told me.
Okay, that's at the open house.
So that's off the table, so now maybe the reason they needed to get back there is not even in the flood?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what.
So the only thing that, like I said, whatever they iterated in the meeting that we do, was hiking, primitive camping at that time.
Two trails, actually one trail in route.
Right, and then the other part of it was hunting.
Right. Yeah. All, all fully accessible now.
K L E U.
Yeah, again, thank you guys. But Tim, have you heard anything about expanding anything?
I don't have a help to her tonight, so.
No, that's, that's the thing with DNR, they, those people can change. The body that's in control now can change at some point, and my understanding is, then they can do something different back there.
Yeah. You know, with fifty, sixty thousand acres of public accessible parks and forests in this county, why this twelve hundred acres is so important to put a major project in? I'm just telling you, I, my-
You're a pretty smart guy.
I'm not, I'm not that smart, but I, I've been burned enough to know that there's always a reason. Name change, excessive signage, now this. I, uh- There's three dots, and they point in one direction.
I found everybody that lived up there to be fairly knowledgeable, fairly intelligent. But then again, I'm just no Brown County. So you all seem to know what you're talking about.
Lived here a long time, yeah.
Yeah, thank you guys, again.
Thank you for listening to us and hearing our viewpoint. I'm, I'll look-
Don't blame me.
I'll look forward, I'll look forward to seeing some survey tape on my property. It doesn't need to be next week, 'cause we got hunting going on, beginning on Saturday, but, uh, maybe after gun season, you can send that, the people out, and, um, be happy to look at that.
Is that not something that, um, I mean, if you got the measurement there, and where the center old road was, could you not just run like a, like a hundred-foot tape and run the measurement back off up onto his property and see where it's at?
Should be able to.
I would think that that would be fairly simple.
Yeah. I mean, they've got a lot of very specific lines that they, the old line, the new line, I, I'm not a surveyor, but I would think it'd be fairly easy to go ahead and roughly show, here's what the new boundary would be. Okay, go IU this weekend, right, Wisconsin?
There you go.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, good to see you, John.
I know you, but I do so-
You bet.
Can I come over to the adjourn? I'll come adjourn.
Second.
Be adjourned.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You guys take care, be safe.
We look good.